Well, good evening. Today is December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Our first order of business tonight is to convene into work session. Our work session will last until six-thirty when we'll reconvene back into general session. So with that, I'll adjourn, or I'll adjourn to the work session. It is now six oh one.
Well, so I got your, you guys' picture on Tuesday night. Get them sworn in. If you want me to text it to you.
Was that what those council people were doing? They were all taking pictures?
Well, no, I walked up and I took a picture of you guys. And Eddie was the only one that smiled at me, so.
Oh, really? John June was up there with a camera though, looking every room.
I saw, I saw, yeah, I just saw guys at the, it's a totally different feeling when you're down there looking up.
It's like you're looking up on that front row.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Yep, shoot it over. Text it over.
Okay. Well, I texted to you. I didn't have their email or their texts.
That's because we, I checked no on giving out my social security numbers.
Oh, exactly. I was like, oh, yeah, no, I think this is a good, sure, why not?
Really?
Yeah.
That's on every standard form. I'm like, why? Somebody's gonna click yes on that?
So, but you sent it this afternoon? Okay. I don't, my cell phone, we were switching up to new phones, so they were downloading, so I don't have my phone, so.
So it looks like.
Uh-huh, alright. Thank you.
Well, so after the meeting, if you guys want to know.
Can you Photoshop me, please?
You were in a Darth Vader outfit.
Yes, I was.
Like that Darth Vader in there in the IT room or whatever it is? As you're walking by, you see Vader standing there?
I saw the stockings, I didn't see anything.
Can you just transfer it to my phone if it's near you?
Oh, airdrop?
Airdrop.
You gotta allow them to.
See, the technology's.
So Jim, what's going on here? Didn't shade this morning, huh?
Yeah, last couple days.
No, this morning.
Since noon.
It's my fall look. It's when I just give up on all appearances.
Starting on Movember, all that stuff?
Yeah, yeah. Start eating turkey like it's free, you know, not to mention sweet potato casserole.
E O R T.
My wife has full meat replacement, so we've got a food training from the church.
Seven, six, two.
And everyone's bringing this dessert with every meal.
Oh.
And I'm just like, I mean, I'm, it's unfair, you know?
Nice.
So it's been wonderful, yeah.
Very nice. What do we have tonight, Mary?
It worked.
Not too much.
Are we gonna have everyone tonight?
All but Cindy.
Cindy, no. Did we hear?
How about Freddie?
Freddie, yes.
Yeah, I thought Freddie said, yeah.
Yeah, I did see his response.
Yeah, he was one of the first ones to respond, but I don't know where he is, so.
The first to respond and the last to arrive.
Greg, you wanna sit in for our missing member?
Yes, here we go.
Yeah, you can have his box.
Can we swear a name real fast?
He's like, no.
Mom told me not to talk.
She told me to sit here quietly, not.
He's already on the smart city board.
There you go.
Been appointed.
Do you wanna be on the smart city board, buddy?
Did she make you come tonight?
Alright, so this evening.
Is it on?
Is this, is this the recording? Doctor, turn this on.
No, we're, we're zooming.
Don't you have to go out and open it up?
He did already.
Alright, I already opened it, opened the meeting, so this is our work session. So I'm Chairman Edvin Haas, we'll do the role here. Commission Member Bishop, absent. Commission Member Guerra, not here yet. Commission Member Portman.
Here.
Commission Member Blanketship.
Present.
Commission Member Mar.
Present.
And Commission Member Walker.
Roger that.
Roger that. Okay, turn it over to staff for the staff's view of the cases.
Alright. So I'll give you a quick recap of Tuesday night for those of you that weren't here. So we had a lovely reception to the boards and commissions and people that were reappointed. So thank you, Eddie, Glenn.
Yes, thank you. To all of you for coming back.
So how many people, what was the total number of applicants? Cause I know shortlist was about six or seven, it seemed like, that night?
Um, yeah, so I think we had seventeen, I think, that applied for this board, just for this board.
Wow.
And then I think we interviewed about seven.
Alright. Well, that's good. That's a good sign, with interest and applicant stuff.
Yeah. So I appreciate you guys for wanting to stay on the board.
Thanks for having us.
Alright.
There's a one in sixteen shot that, you know, that we got on. So fifteen out of sixteen that we did.
Um, so we had the boards and commissions, kind of banquet event. Reappointment on Tuesday. Also at city council, we took ordinance for the Whitestone project, the five twenty-five thirty-two cocktail ordinance, Point West Hotels, and then an amendment to the Smoothie King ordinance, which was more of us fixing a Scrivener error type of deal. And for this evening's pleasure, we'll be having a plaque for the live work units on Heath and Copel Road, and I'll let Mr. Steer take it from here.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Portman Boswell. So we have the plaque for the live work ordinance, or for the live work case. It's in compliance with the ordinance that was approved. I'll go through kind of the case that was presented to you guys, then how it was presented to city council, then how it was modified and brought back to council, and just kind of some changes that you guys didn't see, but I'll give you those, those changes out, out in the.
The change is minor?
Yeah, they were minor changes, but significant enough to appease all the neighbors. So really, you know, he worked with the neighbors and met with them several times and, you know, reduced the setback and, or he increased the setback on the east side, gave them the ten-foot buffer, included trees, and reduced the footprint from fifteen hundred to twelve hundred square feet.
Wow.
And, yeah, that was on the first floor.
That's a pretty big deal.
On the first floor. So then that reduced the need for the parking, also staggered some of the parking off of the driveway or off of the garages, so it wasn't impacting the in and outs for the residents. So they did a lot of work and they were asked to reduce the density, and they couldn't do that and still make it profitable. So what they did was they just reduced the lot coverage and tried to squeeze things in there better, and which, which they did. So, but I'll go through in more detail out there.
So how did that work? Procedurally, because they were minor, then you felt that administratively, you could just send it, send it on to council? If it was enough, you, or you felt we needed to see, you could trigger it? Could have triggered that?
Right, yeah. So if they would have done anything that would have increased the intensity of the development, we would have definitely brought it back to you. But everything was actually making the product less intense, less dense, and, yeah. So, so more in conformance with the ordinance.
So you ditched us and just made that on? Call yourself, I got it.
I got it.
So they did, they did ask the city attorney whether or not they needed to send it back to the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Steer.
So like, for example, now that he's reduced the setback and the square footage, does he still have that screening fence on upstairs balcony? All that same stuff is all still.
Right, yeah, so they, so they still are screening the views from that second floor down to the, yeah.
But like, the landscaping, they didn't, they meant that one is now, right?
Right, yeah, so they have the ten-foot buffer for the landscaping, and then they planted trees there, so those were evergreens, which would add to that eight-foot wood fence.
Right.
The evergreen screen there, so that would help quite a bit. So just little things that were tweaked. He also changed the uses. So you guys heard medical office as being one of the uses. The remainder were either gonna be office or service type uses. Well, he changed one medical office and the rest professional office, which decreases the parking demand. So.
Does he have tenants for any of these things?
Uh, he's gonna be here, and so, yeah, he'll, he'll be up ready to speak about how many people he's got in line, so definitely ask him those questions.
Well, he's gonna be one of the tenants, right?
Yeah, wasn't he gonna live there?
Right, correct. Yeah. So I talked to him today, I don't wanna steal his thunder.
Okay, no thunderstorm.
So any other? Any other questions on the item six? Okay. Item seven's probably where we're gonna spend the majority of the time, unless you guys just wanna stamp it approved and we can go on. But basically, item seven is revising the sign section of the zoning ordinance, or amending it to include change the monument signs and then addition of pylon signs and their regulations. So, so the monument signs, right now, we allow changeable letters on two types of monument signs, and those are governmental and religious monument signs. And so we're adding to that schools and seasonal businesses. And the reason why we're adding schools is a few years ago, probably over five years ago, we had an agreement with the school district that we would allow changeable letters for their monument signs. That was written in a letter from the city manager to the superintendent. And so what we're doing is we're formalizing that in the ordinance to, you know, correct what's out there now, and so I've got a couple of examples of school signs. The other reason for the change is seasonal businesses. So we've got Trinity River Kayak that's out on the outskirts of the city, and they're only open for certain periods of time. And they're similar to a school in the sense that they're only open certain periods of time out of the year. They want to advertise for groups, and they want to advertise for when they're not open, you know, or when they're going to be open, so they don't have people stopping at the gate, you know, looking in. So that'll make traffic flow a lot easier in that particular case. You know, when you talk about changeable letters, you talk about changeable content, and the city does not have the authority to regulate content on signs anymore. So there was a Supreme Court case that it was, it was judged to, you know, it was a First Amendment right that they were allowed to put whatever they wanted on the monuments, or on their signs, and it basically said, cities, you cannot dictate what's on a, what's on a changeable sign. So that's one issue that you're opening the door to if we allow a private entity to put changeable content. Now, I'll tell you, I've spoken with Jeff Varnell, he's assured me, you know, he's only gonna put his events, he's not gonna put any political messaging. He's wanting to do something. My response is, city can't regulate content. So he might have a solution worked out on the private side to where, you know, it's not us enforcing that on him. So that, that might be the way he goes, so.
Now, what other businesses does this apply to in the city of Copel?
Well, so it does not apply to, I was looking through, trying to figure out what it could apply to. I don't think it will apply to anything else today, but.
So we're changing the regulations for one business?
Well, because it does have a unique, a unique circumstance, and, you know, it's a.
Right, but you're opening the door up for other businesses, potentially if they come in here, even though he says, well, you know, I'll do it this way.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a good point. Now, we have put the, put the provisions in the definition. We've made those pretty strict, and so we've given, you know, it's, it has to be operational for more than four months and less than nine months in between that sort of period of time. So that limits it, so we're not gonna have firewood, Christmas tree sales. Those temporary businesses apply for signs, so we're not gonna see a proliferation of these type signs.
But you could have a donut store saying Chocolatey Claire's, right? I mean, there was an only institutional uses the schools and this passive recreational use?
Well, so, so it's a permanent business that's only open for a certain period out of the year.
Right, but if I'm a retiree and I have a donut shop, I can leave it open half a year.
Right, and, and if you, if you did that and closed it, you know, for a certain period, then you'd fall within that definition. I don't think, I don't think they would do that just to fall within our definition, but they could.
But if I'm a retiree, it's a good business plan, right? I don't have to work half a year.
So how, so, so how would this work? I mean, so they'll have to apply to be able to, so they have to apply to put the sign up, and you all, and the city will approve it?
Right, so they'd apply for a sign permit. We have monument sign permits that, you know, we approve all the time. So this is just allowing for changeable letters on that monument sign. Now, I'll tell you, if, if we're looking specifically at Trinity River Kayak, they were permitted a monument sign, and it did have, you know, said Trinity River Kayak on it. And so this would just allow him to reface or first build the monument sign that was approved, and then use changeable letters as opposed to putting a permanent face.
Yeah, I'm struggling with just changing the whole ordinance for one person when we just grant a variance on that one and let it go with the ownership versus the property.
Now, so how would granting a variance in terms of, if you, if say we wrote it into his P D, then it would track the property, not the business.
Right. It just feels like we're changing a whole ordinance for one business that has made a request. Is what it feels like.
Well, so, so we did need to go in there and change it to add schools and do these other revisions. And so it's, it's basically adding a definition and adding seasonal businesses to the allowances. I mean, you're right.
Do you wanna do this for hotels facing one twenty-one and LBJ?
Well, so that's the second, that's the second part to the request. So, so, you know, they're not going to be allowed changeable letters. They would be allowed to be on a pylon sign, which is the second part to the request, which, which I'll go through.
So I'm just trying to, just thinking through. What about someone who leases a corner lot and does a pumpkin patch? They start early.
Christmas cruise.
Then through Christmas.
Fireworks, maybe? Oh, we're.
I don't know, just something, they hit four months.
Right.
They start October one, they go through January thirty-one.
Right, well, so, so we have written in there that it needs to have a C O, and in order to have a C O, you need a, a permanent facility.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it could be not saved, like.
A permanent building, yes, we do.
Is there anybody else in the city of Copel that could tag on to the kayak business?
Well, so, it's, it's so unique, yeah. Yeah. I, I was thinking, because it would be ideal for any business that's very similar to this, but, but they're not, you know, just in that, in that setting where they're only open for a certain period of time.
Cause I couldn't come up with one.
Yeah, I couldn't either, and I did try, you know, I mean, but, but I did think about the landscape, like Rowett and those sort of entities that they do put time to weed and feed, time to, you know, winterize, time to, you know, plant, you know, that sort of thing. But then again, you know, I mean, I don't think we want it to, you know, we've got banner permits that they can use to do that sort of stuff. And do we want, you know, that sort of information? I don't know.
Isn't that landscape company on Beltline have changeable letters?
No, they've got.
I thought that they were.
They've got, they've got one tucked away that's up on.
That I've seen on occasion not tucked away. I remember seeing one.
What was that, really?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it has an orange background, a yellow or background, I mean, I can picture it in my head.
Yeah, and then technically, that's, that's not in compliance.
What's the urgency of doing this now?
Of the reason we're bringing it forward?
Cause I, I saw that, you know, you said that this is long overdue, and I'm sure that's the case, I don't dispute it.
Well, so for the schools, that was, that was part of the rationale was, you know, these schools, we've, we've been permitting them, you know, and based on a letter that was written years ago. And so that, that one was long overdue, and we've had internal discussions on the second part of this, this, or this amendment, the pylon signage for quite some time.
The one thing, Matt, that would really help me with this, maybe it's just my background, my profession, which is tiresome and irritating to most people. But like, I was looking at this and wondering, okay, you know, the Trinity River Kayak people, he's been hanging political signs out there every election cycle.
Ah, but those are not regulated.
Right, but he's been hanging signs out, so why couldn't he just simply hang a banner that says, we open in June or something, right?
Yeah, there's certain periods.
How does this comply with the setback provisions and the rest of the sign ordinance? I guess what I'm getting to is, I think when we look at amending an ordinance, it'd be really helpful to have a redlined version of the ordinance showing what we're adding and what we're removing, and then what's staying in. Cause it's really not possible for us to, but was it in there?
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah.
Wasn't it in?
Yeah.
Was it in there? Oh, because was it not in the electronic version?
It should be.
I'm sorry.
You gotta hit the link.
Well, yeah, but hit the link where?
On the red print.
Again, you're on my point.
No, I know, but.
This is not a one and done tonight. We could hear it and table it and contemplate it.
I apologize, I apologize. I just didn't see that. Okay, well, this is very helpful. And you see why we're tiresome and irritating? It's not an accident. So then like, this is my other question, so how do we, where is this monument sign going to go?
Okay. Right off, right off the bat, he's already got a monument sign that's been approved to go out there.
Off the.
Where though?
It's gonna be on the west side of their driveway, or on.
Right, yeah, correct.
So he got an exception to the setback?
No, it's, it's on his property.
It's on his property, he did.
The angle, the angle is kinda funny, and we variance, didn't we let him raise it a little? Because it's tight distance, because the sign was gonna be lower than the street.
So it's already out there, he's just gonna be able to put a message on it, that's all we're talking?
It hasn't, it hasn't been constructed, but it has been approved. So it hasn't been constructed, it's been approved, and, and so, you know, rather than drag him through a P D process. I was bringing for these changes, and I thought seasonal business, it makes sense. Anyone in his circumstance, we would, we would recommend approval of changeable letters, so we'll just go ahead and amend the ordinance. So that was kind of my, my rationale behind it. Now, the second part to the request.
Wait, before we go there.
Okay.
What about like Blackberry Farms? They had a little, like a nursery, or they had a.
The building up front.
Yeah, like a cottage or something.
Okay.
Now, if that, if they, I don't know if it's ornamental, if they're gonna have something inside it, or.
They're gonna do some seasonal.
So seasonal, so they could have lots available soon?
That's not, that's not for sale, that's not a retail center. That is a community center for their community garden.
It's residential.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's their H O A, common area lot, yeah.
So could, so could you theoretically have, let's say there's vacant retail space, they already have their C O, they lease it to the pumpkin factory, and it's, it's now seasonal business, it's permanent, so they could be, as long as they're in there for the four months.
Right.
And then they had a, they could build a monument, and then they could rotate businesses in and out of there, like the Halloween store, yeah, I mean, they.
I see what you're saying.
I mean, could that happen, or could it, could it not? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not making.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe on, under the, the way the definition's written, I think.
Just animal building?
Yeah, I think I've got it in there, it's, it says, it's gotta be open for no more than nine months. More than four months, but no more than nine.
Right, I was concerned with that language, but that's okay.
Well, so, yeah, you know, I'm willing to change.
It's impossible.
Well, so it does, I did talk to Jeff, and it does, it, he's okay with, it falls within his business plan, so, you know.
I think we're just making sure that there's not a Pandora's box where.
Right, you're opening it up for one, I mean, I get the church, I get the school, I'm alright with those. I just, I struggle with the one business that we're just changing our whole ordinance to just accommodate him when we could just grant him a variance instead of opening Pandora's box.
Yeah.
Well, so, you know, I think in the future too, if you actually publish stash, staff reports in advance, it means it'd be helpful. Oh, it's in here, oh.
Irritating lawyer guy.
Yeah, so, I guess, so was the variance on the setback for the property already granted when he built the place?
It's part of the P D.
It's already part of the P D. So, so he would just have to go through the, the process to just be able to put letters on it?
Yeah, he would not be allowed to have changeable letters on his monument sign to where he could go and change it out, like Boy Scouts event, you know, he wanted to be able to go change it out. He would have to first get a sign permit that says Trinity River Kayak, and then every time he wanted to change something, he would have to come get another monument sign permit. Because it's, the way the ordinance is written today, it's written for permanent signage. So anytime a business comes in and changes names, then they'll get a reface.
Right, but he could put anything on that sign. He could put political messages, he could put bad words.
Right, well.
But would it not be tied to the business operation, some wording?
Can't, can't dictate that.
We can't regulate content, so theoretically, you're right. He could, even on his permanent sign, put something.
Go Cowboys for playoffs.
Offensive to some people.
He could, he could do that as.
Why not the go Broncos?
Or something.
Oh, it's the Cowboys, not the Broncos. It hangs a political sign out there.
There is, yeah, it can't, it can't be like offensive, you know, deemed offensive.
No, they can be in the right way.
Yes, with their right of mark.
Yeah, you can't use like really, really bad.
Right, 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 yeah. And then how does this?
So you can put your local election signs out in the public right of ways for so many weeks on either side.
On either side of the election.
But not within ten feet of the road, though.
Yeah, you can't put it in the right of way.
Yes, you can.
No, no, no.
Oh, yes, you can.
People do, you're not allowed to, though.
But, I mean, I had to put a, put a disclaimer on it that it, this won't be, if the law requires, as we say, this won't be put up within ten feet of a roadway.
It can't be in the right way.
My point being, he's already doing that, so, I don't know.
Well, so, yeah, political signs aren't permitted within the city right of way.
Right, but if you have changeable letters, doesn't mean you can't put political messages on that board.
Well, that doesn't bother me so much, only because, I mean, it'd be kinda silly as a business person to do that, only because.
Well, it's also his home.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying. Freedom of speech.
He's living there now.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know if it's a.
Oh, I don't know.
Now, there's a blind company tenant that was.
Yeah, he's got a P D, he's got a P D established.
Cause it's meant for the, it's meant ideally for the business, right? But that's the intent.
Ideally.
What's the intention of the temp signage?
Okay, so, so temp signage, we're bringing, we're ending the moratorium on, we're not enforcing them right now. The moratorium ends December thirty-first, so. The, the moratorium ends December 31st, so they'll be required to take away their temp signs and, you know, everything will go back to normal. We've already sent out a letter, uh, making them aware, hey, you know, December 31st, take out your federal signs and do all that sort of stuff. But, but the second part to this request, or not request, it's an amendment, is the pylon signage along, uh, Interstate 635, 121 and, uh, Sam Rayburn Tollway. And so basically, if, if you guys remember, what we've, what we've approved for the larger retail centers is, is forty feet in height, ten feet wide, and then they can put the tenant names on the signs. We're proposing something similar for, uh, highway frontage properties that are master planned, a larger sort of development. And this would help Point West at 635, the, the vacant property, uh, help that develop and make it more attractive for retail developers to go in there if they, they figure out, hey, I can put a pylon sign up to advertise my, my retail businesses. It would also help, uh, the Market Street Center, uh, you know, there's Market Street, Whataburger, uh, Bank One or Bank America. And, uh, and then the emergency room, give them an opportunity for a sign, it would help out Roses, LA Fitness, uh, Hat Creek, give them a sign, across the road from there, the Magnolia Office, it would give them a sign. And, uh, and then Vista Point, which, you know, you, you guys probably don't even know about, but that, uh, MacArthur and 121, there's a, a shopping center that's kind of tucked away back there. We did, did everything we could to keep it tucked away and keep the landscaping nice, but, you know, it would help identify that center from the interstate or from, uh, Sam Rayburn.
Now, I thought that, pardon, pardon me because, um, I deal with a lot of different cities. I didn't think it was called the Business Zoning District, I thought it was like the freeway overlay or the highway overlay, I can't remember.
It's highway, it's highway commercial and, yeah.
But that's not what this says.
Right, and I've made a, made an amendment to since the staff report went out, I want to call it Highway Commercial District. And, and so I've kind of, uh, pylon signs are permitted in the highway commercial zoning districts as follows, and then I'll go through it.
Okay, because I was confused by that, I'm like, why are we allowed up there?
Yeah, so I had taken, uh, the verbiage from, it was either Carrollton's or Farmer's Ranch Ordinance and, and kind of.
Okay, I just couldn't re, I couldn't remember what our district was called, but that did sound right.
Yeah, so, so the Business Zoning Districts would have included light industrial, would have included all those other. And, yeah, we don't want, we don't want to go there, we just want the master planned retail centers that have multiple lots that have been conceptually planned and they have a consistent architecture, we want them to use that same architecture on that sign. And, and so, you know, if there's any crafting of the ordinance that we can, that you guys see, let me know and, you know, when it goes forward to City Council, we can, you know, add that to it.
This seems to argue that we continue it till January, see the next draft of it before we tell Council which way we want to go.
Next draft of the, the, yeah, the, you know, we're just speaking conceptually, you know, and so we've got an attorney that can, that can do the drafting of the ordinance and make sure it represents what we, what we come up with, what we want, right?
Okay, Quick Trip would benefit from that too, right?
Because it's in a master plan.
Yeah, good.
And the hotel there and I guess Berry?
Uh, Berry's not part of a, a master plan, um, it is, it is a large, large lot, you know, I mean, I didn't even consider Berry getting a.
I was just curious.
Well, it, it does have HC then as a base zone.
Yeah.
So Highway Commercial doesn't already allow a pylon?
No, yeah.
No, not.
It allows monument signs which are, you know, four or six foot in height, but a pylon sign is forty foot in height.
So the ones that have been, that you see, they've been granted a, a variance or part of a PD?
Okay, okay, because, yeah, we've, we've approved that a few times.
So the idea is to take it out of that.
Okay, got it.
Ask and make it a given.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, quite frankly, the, the one that we just approved at the, the two hotel sites, that's really the one that, that we want to see, you know, if, if they could just match the same, uh, building materials. I mean, that would be ideal to have something like that, uh, throughout.
Okay, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Uh, nowhere does it mention electronic signs.
Right.
Okay, are we just remaining silent on that or do we explicitly state that we don't want electronic signs? Because changeable letters could be an electronic sign.
Well, so, so in there, we've got no internal elimination. And so, uh, that would prohibit the electronic signs, that's just the way we've, we've interpreted. But that's a good, good observation, you know, I mean, should we just specifically prohibit electronic signs?
Right, because there is one electronic sign in the city of Capel. Very bright.
Is it the theater?
The, yeah, the people across the street moved because of the sign.
But they covered that up, yeah?
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't noticed it lately, but I do, I think a lot of people live there and they move.
So, yeah, so that's been covered up, it's Capel Theater, it's got a, a metal plate over it that just says.
Because they added another facility there, it's like it's Capel Theater and something else. And so when they added something else, they covered it up, but I don't think they covered it up, I don't think they would have if they hadn't added another tenant to the building. So.
Well, well, you know, so, so electronic signs.
Yeah, that thing was hideous.
So what, what we did was we brought forward an electronic sign to City Council to see if they wanted us to pursue for the art center. And it was a, a really nice design and it, it, you know, they said, no, if we don't, if we don't allow it for the private sector, we shouldn't allow it for ourselves, sir.
Yeah, and then the art center is so eliminated as it is, I mean, I don't know, that really needs another sign up front.
Right.
Oh, it's gonna be out by the road.
Yeah, out by Bethel.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
Advertise.
They can use a changeable sign, oh, no, they can't.
Well, well, so it, it is a governmental.
You got this right, there are ten million changes that could happen. I mean, I think we continue it, do the final ordinance and let the public look at it in January.
But, and can we go back to one other thing you said?
So what time do we get?
Oh.
Six thirty seven.
Yeah, should we go out in the public?
Yeah.
No, I, I could ask it out there, I was just gonna say, what, if Jeff goes through the PD process, I mean, is that really all that oppressive? Couldn't we just let him do that and then we don't change this just for one business without, and then worry that somehow everyone starts walking into it?
We could.
I mean, our process isn't that oppressive.
Yeah, you know, I wanted to bring this to you guys for discussion, so I think we're, we're having that and I think it's good, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if you want to recommend, you know, eventually tabling it if, say, we can't get to a resolution on these things, you can recommend that, if you want to recommend, hey, we dropped that from, from it and, and just bring back this other stuff, we can do that.
I'm just reluctant to change the ordinance if, if there isn't, I mean, all the pylon signs I can see where that would be beneficial for a lot of businesses, both north side, south side, all over. But there's no one else clamoring for this other.
Yeah, but I also get the schools and the churches, um, you know, and I, not that I don't trust a business owner, but the school and church aren't going to put nasty words or political signs or, you know.
Well, and I was laughing because I was like, well, wait a minute, Mockingbird East has been, had that changeable sign forever, it's always like happy birthday. Yeah. And I saw your, your report, you said, oh, yeah, because that letter, I mean, yeah, I'm good with all that, I just, we've really only got one business.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, let's go through it out there and then we can look.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to. I mean, everyone's just on the edge of their remote on the cable access. Waiting for us.
You guys, we got our audience friend showed up.
P and G, we need to call him up, welcoming all our residents. Okay, it is six forty-two and we are now convening into our regular session, um, this evening. Our first order of business is a citizens' appearance. We don't have anybody signed up, Kami, I see you nodding no, okay, we do have some new guests in the audience tonight, welcome to new guests. Uh, item five on the agenda is to consider approval of our October meeting minutes. You might recall, we didn't meet in November, so we have our October meeting minutes. Is there any discussion by the commission or is there a motion by the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the October twenty-one, twenty twenty-one Planning and Zoning Commission meetings be approved as written.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Portman, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Blankenship, Kami, would you call the roll, please?
Please respond by saying aye or nay as I call your name, Commissioner Blankenship?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Portman?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mauer?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
All approved, none opposed, motion carries.
Okay, very good, our first order of business tonight, item six on the agenda is a public hearing. This is to consider approval of Lost Creek, this is a live work addition, lots one through five and lot six X, block A replat, being a replat of the Lost Creek addition, lot twenty-seven, block one into five live work lots and one common lot area containing zero point seven oh, zero nine acres of land in total. Located at the northeast corner of South Capel Road and Heath Lane at the request of Chris Collins. And we have a staff report by, uh, a city staff member, Matt Steer, Matt?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening, this property is located on the northeast corner of South Capel Road and Heath. Uh, case was heard by PNZ in August twenty twenty-one and brought to council September fourteenth. And after a public hearing, the case was postponed, uh, the applicant was asked to address concerns that related to the density of the proposal, to work with staff and the neighbors to address their concerns and bring the case back for consideration. On September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, council approved the plan development, two thirteen R six dash H. There were several revisions made from the case that was presented to, to the commission in August. The size of the first floor office use was reduced from fifteen hundred to twelve hundred square feet. The use was limited to one medical office and four professional office uses. The shared parking on the west side of the drive was staggered north of the garages. One of the on-street parking spaces was removed due to visibility concerns. And the buildings were shortened, leaving the required ten-foot perimeter on the east side and four live oaks that were proposed to be planted in that area there. The plat is in conformance with the subdivision regulations and does warrant approval, I'll walk through the easements that are shown on the plat. There's a mutual access easement which covers the whole six, lot six X, parking and sidewalk easement along South Capel Road, a fire, dead-end fire lane easement, utility easement along Heath Lane, a drainage easement at the southeast corner, private water easement that serves each of the lots domestically, and then, uh, private maintenance, drainage access and utility easements between each of the, uh, houses or the lots. Staffs recommend the approval of this request with, with the following conditions, one, that additional comments may be generated upon detailed engineering review, and two, file the HOA documents at time of plat recordation. And that concludes my presentation, this is a public hearing and I'll be happy to answer any questions, thanks.
Very good, thank you, Matt, any questions of, uh, staff by the commission? Matt, I just wanted to, to just note that you'd mentioned in our pre-work session that there were some minor adjustments, but they were all generally in conformance, uh, with the requirements?
Uh, yes, that's correct, I had, uh, mentioned those, the five, five different, uh, things.
Very good, okay, any questions of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody like, wishing to speak for or against the proposed application, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion by the commission or a motion by the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will move that the Planning Commission approve the Lost Creek Live Work Edition, lots one dash five and lot six X, block A replat, being a replat of Lost Creek addition, lot twenty-seven, block one into five live work lots and one common area lot containing zero point seven oh nine acres of land. Subject to the city staff conditions.
Very good, we have a motion by Commissioner Portman, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second Commissioner Blankenship, Kami, would you call the roll, please?
Please respond by saying aye or nay as I call your name, Commissioner Blankenship?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Portman?
Aye.
Chairman Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mauer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
All approved, none opposed, motion carries.
Very good, thank you much. Item seven on the agenda is a public hearing, this is to consider approval of sections twelve through, twelve, I'm sorry, twelve dash twenty-nine dash one and twelve dash twenty-nine dash four, that being the sign ordinance, a text amendment to amend the code of ordinances, chapter twelve, article twenty-nine, being the sign regulations and section twelve dash twenty-nine dash one being definitions, twelve dash twenty-nine dash four being provisions for business zoning districts to define and allow for pylon signage adjacent to State Highway one twenty-one and IH six thirty-five, and to define and allow for seasonal businesses and to allow for public and private schools to use changeable letters on their monument signs and provide for regulations and definitions. We have a staff presentation by Mr. Steer, Matt?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is item number seven, it is your second public hearing this evening. And simply put, these changes relate to the addition of pylon signage, regulations adjacent to the highways and to include schools and seasonal businesses, the opportunity to have changeable letters on their monument signs. Uh, the last revisions, the ordinance were done in twenty fourteen. Uh, the changes were some of several amendments that related to our Small Business Assistance Initiative and they consisted of, uh, reducing the setback of monument signs, uh, from fifteen feet to ten feet where adjacent to a parking area to provide more visibility. Uh, increasing the allow, uh, the allowable attached signage, uh, where on corner lots, also increasing the size by ten percent if it was in a shopping center, that was three hundred feet from the, uh, right of way. And then also allowing for the, uh, small businesses or the, any business to have a ten-square-foot blade sign, uh, in addition.
And similar to schools, TRK is on a permanent or at a permanent location and they want to advertise when they're open or closed during certain periods of the year and when they have events for boy, girl scout troops and other organizations. TRK is in a unique situation that involves a live-work use. When it's not open for business, they don't want the traffic stopping out in front of their, their house checking to see if they're open. The proposed definition of seasonal business is written in such a way to include businesses located at a permanent location that are only open for part of the year and it would exclude businesses such as Christmas tree sales, firewood sales and the like that are at temporary locations. The permanent monument signs without changeable letters typically list the name of the shopping center or name of the business. With changeable letters comes changeable content and this could be funny to some and offensive to others. So this should really be something that, that's analyzed when making this decision. I expected a little more of a laugh with that slide, but yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. So let's move on to the second part of the, the amendment. Pylon sign means a freestanding sign supported by two vertical pole supports encased in brick, stone or materials which are architecturally compatible with the main building or structures on the property. Pylon signs are permitted in the HC zoning districts as follows. This is a change. Previously, I had business zoning districts in, in the proposal, but HC zoning districts really makes a lot more sense and narrows the focus. Pylon signs must be supported by two vertical pole supports encased in brick, stone or materials architecturally compatible with the main building or structures within the development. And item B is one pylon sign in addition to all the other allowable signage is permitted for master-planned retail centers fronting one twenty-one, Sam Rayburn Tollway or IH six thirty-five as follows. So the maximum size would be eight hundred square feet and this would consist of a, a sign that's forty feet maximum height. And the minimum setbacks would be fifteen feet from the street right-of-way and seventy-five feet from the internal property lines, other than those properties that, that face other rights-of-way. And these shall be allowed to include tenant names within the overall development. So if, say, you have a, a large conceptual PD, it would allow for the, the tenant names that are off-site, that aren't technically, that don't have that frontage on the, on the highway, but, so those, those would be considered off-premise signs. But as long as they're part of the master-planned retail center, we would allow those tenant names on the monument or on the pylon sign. So this, this has previously been granted in two larger conceptual plan developments on highway frontages and was recently brought up again with the two hotels that was, that were proposed at one twenty-one. So here's the existing Point West development at six thirty-five. And you can see their, their pylon sign with their development that's behind it. By allowing this by right, the ordinance can help promote vacant properties. For example, the large parcel of land at Point West and six thirty-five. Here's one sign on State Highway one twenty-one in Sandy Lake that was just approved for the two hotels. And here's the four hundred square foot pylon sign. You can see it's forty foot in height, twenty foot wide. And this would be kind of the example we would give developers and, and how to conform with what we're trying to get. Here's the North Gateway Plaza development, which contains Roses Cafe, Hat Creek Lot, LA Fitness. And this is located at the northwest corner of State Highway one twenty-one in Denton Tap. This is a view from actually the, the tollway there or maybe that's State Highway one twenty-one. And then across the, across the road at the northeast corner of State Highway one twenty-one in Denton Tap is the Market Street development. And, you know, just looking off of Google, Google Earth, you can't really see Market Street tucked back in there. But it's a pylon sign with nice architecture would really fit in, fit in well. And you do have an, an area four that would be really suitable for a, a pylon sign. And here's the Magnolia Office, which is at the southwest corner of one twenty-one and Denton Tap. And you can just see the tops of the, the office, medical office structures there. So this would really give some visibility for this shopping center. Then we've got Vista Point, which is tucked away on MacArthur and one twenty-one at the southwest corner. Here's one sign on State Highway one twenty-one in Sandy Lake that was just approved for the two hotels. And here's the four hundred square foot pylon sign. You can see it's forty foot in height, twenty foot wide. And this would be kind of the example we would give developers and, and how to conform with what we're trying to get. Here's the North Gateway Plaza development, which contains Roses Cafe, Hat Creek Lot, LA Fitness. And this is located at the northwest corner of State Highway one twenty-one in Denton Tap. This is a view from actually the, the tollway there or maybe that's State Highway one twenty-one. And then across the, across the road at the northeast corner of State Highway one twenty-one in Denton Tap is the Market Street development. And, you know, just looking off of Google, Google Earth, you can't really see Market Street tucked back in there. But it's a pylon sign with nice architecture would really fit in, fit in well. And you do have an, an area four that would be really suitable for a, a pylon sign. And here's the Magnolia Office, which is at the southwest corner of one twenty-one and Denton Tap. And you can just see the tops of the, the office, medical office structures there. So this would really give some visibility for this shopping center. Then we've got Vista Point, which is tucked away on MacArthur and one twenty-one at the southwest corner. And it's heavily screened, looks really nice. But staff is recommending approval of amending the sign ordinance to include, first, changeable letters on monument signs for schools and seasonal businesses in addition to those that are already allowed. And then pylon signage on highway frontage for master-planned retail centers within the HC district. And so, we drafted, took our first stab at the, the ordinance and drafting it up and what we were looking for. We'll have the city attorney look at that and, and make sure it's molded to fit our desires that we come up with this, this evening. Thank you. That concludes my presentation. This is a public hearing.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. Based on pre-session, the range of questions that, that were generated regarding both application of changeable message signs on monument and then some of the other questions, feeling that we might want to continue this or I don't know if tabling's the right approach, but we might want to continue the discussion, but still would like to have that dialogue here in, in the public. I, I do have a couple of questions. I guess we'll start with the, the pylon signs. We define master-plan developments. I think you, you cited large conceptual PD. Do we need to qualify, what's a master-plan development, like a minimum size of lot or combination of properties or something?
Yeah, and that's, that's very, yeah, I will definitely do that. It, it was actually called out for a different sign type within our ordinance, but yeah, there isn't a specific definition. Maybe we can include that for a master.
I'm just thinking that.
Master-planned retail centers.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and it would only apply in HC-zoned parcels per our zoning map, correct? Or PDs as allowed or approved?
Correct, yes. Anything HC or with PD with a base zoning of HC, correct.
Okay, so I'm just kind of looking at our zoning map and I don't know if this is a current one or an old one. I see six thirty-five Belt Line, it's zoned agricultural. This must be old then.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that does have the base zoning HC.
Okay, okay, good. So it's only in HC, okay. And then I, I noticed there on the application, there at six thirty-five Belt Line, we had texts, we had color, we had logos. Do we need to specify what's allowable by way of, you know, color and I don't know if we need to get as detailed as font or definition of what's their official logo and how that applies?
Right, so, so if you like this look, these are US Patent Trademark Office registered trademarks. So if, if you like this look, we can continue that for the, the new signage or the proposed pylon signage.
Would, would there be any provisions on, I guess, the number of businesses placed on the pylon sign? Like for, if they just have, I don't know, buildings that they have a lot of small retail centers? Does it get too busy and crowded? Is there some minimum, some way we can control the, so that doesn't have just a thrown-up-there look?
For sure, yeah. You, you can put stipulations on number of signs.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to take the ability away of, of any of the site to, you know, put that, but just want to avoid that they have a list of their, their primary tenants and then, oh, there's a little bit of space over here, let's put up a name over here because we didn't get them in and let's squeeze one in over here. If there's some way to kind of control it so that there's some forethought into the pylon sign or the, the area or the space where it's going to be filled by the, the store names?
Correct, yeah. You know, it, in terms of regulating content, you know, I'm not sure if we can regulate that it needs to have the store name, but we could probably regulate the allowable area on each of the pylon signs for verbiage, right?
Okay. And then with regards to the changeable message signs, some of the content of our previous discussion and work session dealt with LED signs and that's, it's limited or not allowable. We're, we're saying no electronic type?
Correct. Currently, our, our ordinance would not allow for electronic signs.
The, I think that one of the concerns is the potential of, of a, of a site, unanticipated consequence, I guess, maybe of a site that in any other location. I mean, we're specifically saying school and governmental entities and the Trinity Kayak Company.
Well, we call out seasonal business.
Seasonal businesses.
And, and that definition is, is geared to, Trinity River Kayak would fit within that definition. But it is, it is pretty strict in, in terms of the way it's written.
Okay. And with regards to the content, since content can't be regulated, I guess the hope is that it's content associated with their business with, it's, you know, and not.
Yeah, and, and I've talked to Jeff Farnell and, and he has mentioned that, you know, he would limit it to, you know, girls, boy scout troops and, you know, their events and, and times when they're open and times when they're closed.
Okay. Oh, that kind of makes sense, sense to me. What, what, how, how would it work if someone, some teenagers get a hold of some of these changeable letters and there's a change? You know, hey, Chris, or hey, whatever, you know, or something offensive. Is it, what's, what's the, the process? Someone calls it in to code, saying, hey, there's an issue? Someone has to go out or, or does, what's that process like?
So the city can't regulate content. You know, it would be, you know, if, if someone did come and change the, the letters on the sign, I think it would be a police matter, you know, because they're changing someone else's property, right? But, but specifically, the city is not allowed to regulate content. So that's a First Amendment right, except for, you know, if, say, there's something extremely vulgar that's being on, put on the sign. I think, I think there's some leeway for the cities to, to go in and say, hey, you gotta take that down. Can't use those words.
Right. I mean, I, I can see more, some funny business just for kicks. You know, I don't, I don't think that anyone, anyone would intentionally put something up nasty, but, you know, probably someone will get a phone call and they'll go out and take them down quickly or rearrange it back to what the original intent was, so, okay. Questions by the commission of staff. Sue, you want to fire away?
I, I guess I just have some questions slash comments, some observations, I guess. And I've been trying to wrap my head around it and I finally think I figured out what my issue is on the definition of a seasonal business. In my head, I guess, and maybe it's the way it's written. In my head, it, it was, that's open for more than sixteen consecutive weeks and less than thirty-six, which equals fifty-two. But I think I figured that one out. But anyway, I'll move on. I think I'm okay with, with the, the definition as written after that. But this pylon signs, I, I think I'm also okay with them, but I have a couple of comments, I guess. I'm not okay with the seasonal businesses being included. The government, the schools, I, I think, I think that's completely appropriate and acceptable to put the changeable letters on for those, but I'm not sure that I'm willing to support a seasonal, the seasonal businesses, if that makes any sense.
Is that because of the potential change in business and?
It's because I think we are opening up the door for a lot, other businesses to come in and, and try to squeeze their way into, into that to allow those. I just think somebody mentioned the words Pandora's Box. Because right now, it only applies to one business in the city of, of Capel and I, I find it odd that we're changing an ordinance for one business when that could be granted by a variance or other means. There's other ways for him to, to operate his business instead of changing the ordinance for the whole city where we don't know what that opens up for us. We, we haven't been there. So I'm sure there's, there's operations that, that it would not apply to. In terms of where the pylon signs are permitted, you've already changed, pardon me, because some of these you've already addressed. The highway commercial was one of them, the master plan was the other. On the minimum setbacks, it says the minimum setbacks are fifteen feet from the street right-of-way. Are we thinking that we might want to put a maximum setback in there? Because I don't necessarily think that we want something way back where the hotels are because the purpose of the sign really is to attract from the freeway, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, if you wanted to put a distance, that, that would make sense.
Okay, I, I don't know what that distance might be. I just know that, that, that we're trying to strongly encourage it to be up, up closer to the freeway or service road.
Right, yeah. And part, part of the reason why I didn't put a maximum distance was on this one here. was on this one here, you know, you've got, you know, let's say this is 15 foot back right here. So that would be a minimum. But then you've got this area here, which would be visible. You know, each site is somewhat unique.
Okay.
And so, you know, maybe if we put 200 feet or something that gives them a little bit of flexibility and because there is.
Right, but I don't know that I would support a sign 200 feet back from where the freeway is.
Okay.
I mean, I would think it would have to be somewhat closer, maybe, I don't know, 75 or 100 feet. And I think this site would comply with that if they wanted to put it in that median.
Yeah, if you figure each car space is nine, nine foot wide, yeah. So about 100 foot back would be right, right in here. So absolutely, I think that 100 foot would make sense as the maximum distance.
And then I just had issues with, and this is just me, I apologize in advance for my weirdness. On the last sentence, it says, "These shall be allowed to include tenant names with the overall development, including those considered off-premise, provided that they are within the master planned retail center." And this is just grammatic. I think it should say, provided that the sign is located within the master planned retail center property. Just verbiage.
No, that's, that's good. And what I can do is change.
I'm not a fan of the word "that."
Change that to conceptual planned development center.
Perfect.
So, yeah.
Okay, I think that concludes my.
Property. I would include property as well.
Yes, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Any other Commissioner comments?
Mr. Comments?
Jim?
Thank you, sir. So just a couple of observations. I support what Commissioner Blankenship said about the seasonal businesses. You know, if we had, if we could identify more than one business that it would apply to potentially, or if we had multiple businesses that were seasonal businesses that were, you know, clamoring for the change, then that would be one thing. I think we could do a better evaluation of the ramifications of it. But, you know, it wouldn't apply just to the one business we have now, but to any other business that might be built or, you know, landscaping redesigned in a way that would accommodate it. And I just don't think our PD process within the city is anything that would be that bad to go through. If there's a distinct property with a distinct need and kind of unique aspects where we've already approved the sign. It's part of the PD as is, then I would rather see that one business that that applies to. Go ahead and just complete that process rather than change your ordinance altogether for it. And then on the pylon signs, you know, as I was looking at the pylon signs we have and then like the one that's proposed for the two hotels, I believe they're on 121 or is that Sandy Lake, that one? I know in the past, we had requirements that you could only have so much stucko in relation to stone and that sort of thing. We had like a proportionality requirement. And I was told there would be no math. But is there some way that we could devise some kind of proportionality formula that would regulate the size of the font? Or the, the number of tenants that could be displayed in relation to the size font, given the size of the sign? Just because like this one, obviously, I think visually, aesthetically, it's entirely tasteful, it would look nice. I don't have any problem with it at all. And I could see where hotels particularly would want to announce to people, you know, maybe we should pull over and go to sleep and start again tomorrow morning fresh or something like that. I could see where that would have great value to the business. But, you know, I think what our chairman was kind of talking about, you know, squeezing things in or making it look too kind of disorganized or, or, you know, not well presented, I think, could destroy the aesthetic if we weren't careful. And it seems to be some type of proportionality formula of the number of tenants in relation to the size of the sign in relation to the size of the font used. Because like that one you had for Point West, you know, those are all trademarked logos, as you say. But then you look like, like because it's a commercial logo and it's a trademark logo, then the last two words in the Dunkin' logo are so small that they're virtually impossible to read. Almost the same thing for bread in the Panera sign. So that, the proportionality may be like more of a limit as to too big as opposed to, you know, a minimum size. But that was just one thought I had. Maybe there's something we could do to try to give a little bit more guidance to the people building these so they're not coming in for variances all the time or, or just putting stuff up and then saying, well, there's, how would we know any different? And then the other thing I wanted, if you look at the Cafe Rosa's location, if you could bring that up, please, Matt? So it reminded me of a situation. I had a partner that lived in Plano and they built a house in a new development and it was a beautiful home and all like that. And about two years later, this giant Blockbuster Video sign popped up on the toll road about, like a block behind them, but it just illuminated their backyard. And I think the location of these signs is going to be important because if you look at the overhead of this, you know, there's homes that, that are but just the very back end of that retail. And depending on how the sign's illuminated, could affect, you know, just the view. Like these people on the very back could conceivably see the sign, the top of the sign and the illuminated part of the sign as well as anyone driving on the highway. And I think we've got to be careful that we don't end up providing, in our attempt to try to encourage the commercial enterprises on 121 or a busy thoroughfare like that, that we don't provide some kind of horrible aesthetic, you know, clutter for those homes and their backyards and, you know, when they're out grilling and by the pool and that sort of stuff, trying to enjoy their home. Because that one sign, the Element and the other hotel sign, it is illuminated. It said it was going to be illuminated from the bottom, I think. Yeah, illuminated from below by ground mounted lights. So, you know, they're going to be throwing light up at this stuff. And the top part of that sign might be, depending on the location, might be really kind of a nuisance for people that are living right, right up against it. And the only other comment I had was I noticed, and this wasn't even something you're proposing to change and I apologize, but since it occurred to me, I thought I'd just tell you, that, that one exception about unless, unless you're selling gasoline, the price per gallon of gasoline, I think, or whatever it was. The only thing I would add is that, and it's because I drive a diesel. In theory, they wouldn't be able to display the green diesel number the way that's written. Because it's not gasoline. So I was thinking maybe you would draft it to read, you know, the price per gallon of fuel offered or something along those lines. So that's all I had and great work as always.
Okay. Glenn?
Yes, Matt, a couple of things. One, I generally agree with the seasonal business comment of, you know, including it in for potentially one. I don't necessarily have a huge issue with that. I think the concern I would have is the, we don't really know what else it could apply to or having trouble coming up with that. So that's maybe a little bit concerning. On the, the pylon material, and this is a question, as it relates to the building materials, do we have the ability, because it's signage, to dictate the materials that would go on, that would clad the sign?
Right, yeah. So we don't have the ability to regulate building signage, but structure signage, like signage, we would be able to regulate.
Okay, so we, so as is written, brick or stone would be acceptable?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry to jump in, but wouldn't we want some kind of consistency with the development per se? Just so that, okay.
Yeah, that's included in terms, it has to be architecturally consistent. And then the, the last comment on the font of the sign, I think, I'm thinking of it from a, maybe a little bit of a different angle when you're, you know, since these are primarily going to be read when you, from your car, when you're driving, to make sure that it's actually readable from. So I probably have more of a concern with being too small than being too large, just from a safety standpoint. If you're trying to figure out what it is and you're in a moving vehicle, it could be, you know, fairly dangerous. And so I think that's a good example, I think, in terms of, you know, Panera is probably fairly difficult to read when you're moving. I don't have an issue with the logos or the colors and so forth, because I think that actually makes it more readable. I think the, if it gets too small, that's where I have a concern of either safety or it ends up looking really cluttered and, you know, as you drive by, you think, you can't even read what's on the sign. Why, why is it even there? So I don't know the right way to address that, address that, if it's a minimum font or, you know, what metric of readability. I think that applies to the, probably the setback as well. Because depending on, you know, where you are in the road, how the road turns, 100 may be, you may be able to go further than that and still be, and still be generally readable from wherever you are, if the road is elevated. So 100 is pretty, pretty far. So I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily a problem. But I think just ensuring that it's, you know, we make sure that it's, you know, easily readable.
Maybe set a minimum and a maximum for the sign.
For the sign, height or, yeah.
So are we leaving the, the direction and source of the illumination to, to them entirely? Or are we going to have anything like, I know a lot of emphasis over the last several years has been given to having more downlight just because of the, you know, the light pollution in the sky at night and that sort of thing. Are we, are we, do you think we should have anything at all about that it should be downlighting or it's illuminated at night? Or something along those lines?
You know, that's, that's a great suggestion is maybe to automatically say it needs to be downlit. We could even put some architectural standards in there, the gooseneck lighting or something like that. That does add a little, you know, makes it look, look nicer.
Well, with, and with LED these days too, you know, gosh, you can have a little tiny thing that's bright as a sun up there that, you know, wouldn't really be all that obtrusive.
No, that's, that's a great point.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Glenn?
I'm going to move the Commission to continue this matter to February or March to give time to draft the ordinance again so the Commission can see it in redrafted form. I'm also going to suggest that instead of worrying about Trinity Kayak, which everybody wants the Boy Scout and Girl Scout facility to be able to notify when it's open and closed, to instead of being part of a change in the sign ordinance, just get amendment to their PD and do it just for that business? They've already got the right to assign, so we could change that PD in a two-minute hearing. Without cost to them to do it, to file the application. So it will solve the problem without creating other problems that the city lawyer would need to draft around. And I think we can leave it to staff's discretion as to which month they want to schedule this after it's redrafted. Given Christmas and New Year's holidays, it'd be tight for January. But if they can get it done by then, we can hear it in January. Just pick the time you want to do it.
Matt, any thoughts on, on timing for coming back?
Let's, February.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, in terms of, yeah, we're not having a January PMZ. So it would be February.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I'll, I'll talk with Jeff Farnell if, say, that's what the motion, or, I'll let you guys finish the motion, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions of staff at this time, just for clarification of any of the language? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. I'm guessing that you're here to talk on signage, sir? No, you're not. You were here maybe to talk on the previous item? Sorry we missed you, but it was approved. Thumbs up, okay. All right. So what I will do is I will leave the public hearing open. We'll continue the, this item to our February Commission meeting. And then we'll make a determination whether we close it that night or continue it or whatever.
Okay, I would like more, more direction in terms of, you know, lighting, size, you know, you know, what exactly you guys want me to look at or if you want me to take all these notes and come up with something based on these notes.
I think there's some, there's some uncertainties here. And so I, I don't know if, and I know you did a lot of research on other ordinances and application. But I think what's being raised are just kind of uncertainties of what they could or might look like, might not. So maybe we lean toward, on you to, you know, pull something together. I have several comment areas that I had written my notes on, on the pylon. You know, it's the placement of the sign, the location of the sign. It's more guidance on the text or fonts, the proportionality of the, of the, of the text on the pylon sign. It's the illumination and the, the potential nuisance, but it's the kind of how it's illuminated, whether it's downlit, uplit, how it's controlled. Maybe the issue on type of lighting, which might cause it to be very bright versus not bright, I don't know. Something to think about there on illumination. Then the consistency of materials of the sign with, I think we have that covered though, the materials of, on the pylon sign. And then I kind of hear a consensus on, on the application of the monument sign, the changeable letters, that it might be better off if we address the Trinity Kayak Company separately since most of the language is intact for him to complete that, the ability to do that, rather than to potentially open up unintended consequences of other seasonal businesses. Which we, as we ran through scenarios in our work session, we don't know, we couldn't figure out what some might be, but we, we just don't know.
And the other, in addition to your list, the other two I had were defining master plan, adding in it's only in highway commercials zoned versus I think how it's, how it's written. And then Sue's comment on the last sentence of Section 3 on pylon signs.
And then there was the price of fuel versus the price of gasoline. Because fuel could change to electric, electricity for some of our hybrid cars, the price for unit of power. Okay.
I had one other thing, and I'd like, I'd like you to just take a look at. I don't think in looking at those locations, Matt, that, that any place other than that, the Casarosa's location is going to impact a neighborhood directly. But maybe we should look at having something about proximity to residential property. Just because it, you know, I mean, you're looking at your backyard and all of a sudden you've got this giant sign, you know, that by virtue of the altitude is, I mean, plainly in view of, you know, your entire backyard. It kind of hampers, I think, the, the whole backyard aesthetic for the residents. If you could just kind of take a look and see if that's the only place and if maybe we should address that. Because I, I am sensitive to how that would impact certain of the, those neighbors.
Yeah, I can see that specifically on Sam Rayburn, in several areas potentially, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, if, if they include trees or some sort of landscaping behind the sign, in between the sign and, and, or right up next to it on the backside of the sign so that it wouldn't impact, you know, methods like that they could explore.
Depending on the location, that might work, you know.
Right.
I just don't know. Because, you know, if it's like, if you, if you look at that Casarosa location, if they put that out, thank you so much, if they put that out like on, like on the side, like where do you think would be the more likely location?
Yeah, I, I think this area would be the best location and less impact to the neighborhood. But they do have. but they do have an area, you know, let's see here, so is this, yeah, oh, no. So they have the area right here that does have, it's heavily treed, but that would be the center of the development that would, you know, they'd be able to advertise LA Fitness as well as Hat Creek, as well as Roses and the other...
But we're allowing these signs, if I recall correctly, to be as tall as forty...
Forty feet, forty feet, yeah.
And none of those structures are, are close to, I mean, none of the structures are even three stories, are they?
Well, the LA, no, they're not three stories, no, LA Fitness is, is tall, but, but yeah, you're right.
I think, I think the minute of angle, kind of as you looked back to this house, to, to have trees obscure it, something that tall?
Right.
That would be that close to those neighborhoods. I don't, I just don't know.
Gotcha.
A workable solution.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But it's a creative idea, it's, you know, we should try to consider anything that, because I don't want this one property to be, you know, or any property like it, to be disqualified from it, just because they, like the neighborhood, but I also don't want those neighbors to have to deal with this giant, you know, lit up sign.
Yeah.
That kind of will end up dominating their backyard.
Yeah, and, and we might be able to require sightline studies where adjacent to neighborhoods, so, so that might, that might be a solution.
Yeah.
I remember when we approved the planned unit developments for these properties and commercial centers, the sightlines were part of the hearing that they did not impact the neighborhood, so Matt's suggestion that the pylon sign be blocked or positioned to allow its installation will probably work, it's just going to be hard to define in the ordinance how you're going to get an approval as where you put the sign, because the landlord's going to have to approve where it goes, not each individual merchant.
Any other discussion or direction from the Commission to staff? So do I need anything else to close this item? We're just continuing Item Seven on the agenda to our February meeting, third week, third Thursday of the month. Okay.
Do we need a motion to continue? I'm asking the question.
Okay, let's, let's do that. I'll, I'll entertain a motion for the continuance of this item.
I'll move to continue, agenda Item Seven, so that staff can continue to work and address the various issues that have been raised today during the discussion and to bring it back to us with whatever they determine at our February meeting.
Very good, we have a motion by Commissioner Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Portman, Kami, will you call the role, please?
Please respond by saying "I" in I, as I call your name, Commissioner Blankenship?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Portman?
Aye.
Commissioner Haas? I'm sorry, Chairman Haas?
Aye.
Commissioner Mauer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
All approved, none opposed, motion carries.
Okay, very good. Item Eight on the agenda is update of City Council items, we did review those in work session, so we'll move on. Item Nine is adjournment, I guess prior to adjournment, everyone have a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and we'll see you in February. Okay, very good, thank you very much. Item, with that, I will adjourn our meeting, it is seven thirty, seven thirty-three.
Thank you.